All right. Bonsoir, tout le monde.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 1st meeting, 2025. It's the last meeting of the year in therapy, unless it would be an emergency, we would call a special meeting. First, I would like to remind you, we are gathering on the unceded traditional territory of the Migno people's ancestors signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship with the British Crown, the 1700. Monsieur Cler, we do have Coram, so everyone is here. Number three, conflict of the interest declaration. Any members who would like to declare a conflict of interest on any item of the Council of Patricia Bourg, Javari. So was it removed from the agenda? Is a great request, subvention request? I don't see it anymore, she said. It was for radio, no, it's still there. 12.1, at 12.1, there is four requests. I will excuse myself, I think it's the first one for a radio.
Doc.
Thank you very much. Number four, adoption of the agenda, so you have the agenda in front of you, and we need a motion to adopt. Move by councillor Jeanne Scommier, seconded by deputy mayor Sylvie Colette-Boudreau. Questions on the motion? If not, all in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against, any motion carried? We have two sets of minutes to adopt. The one for November 3rd, 2025, if you probably had a chance to read it, we need a motion to adopt the minutes last presented. Moved by councillor Germaine Gallant, seconded by councillor Orion. Question on this one? If not, all in favor, saying five, saying aye, against, any? Carried, thank you. Germaine and Emil. I guess they're going too fast for the clerk. Second minutes, the one for the last meeting, November 17, 2025, I would need a motion to adopt this one. Move by, move by deputy mayor Sylvie Colette-Boudreau, seconded by councillor Germaine Gallant. Questions on this one? If not, all in favor, saying five, saying aye, against, any? Motion carried. We have a few presentations this evening. So there was one to the request of Mrs. Richard from the public. So you are the first one. It's the Hub and Pascal Poiret House. Good evening, Mrs. Richard, so if you can come up front, please. Thank you very much. Mister Mayor, you have about five minutes, okay, got it. Ladies and gentlemen, councilor, thanks for giving us some time this evening. So for those who do not know me, I think everyone knows me, I've been here for the second time, I'm Jackie Richard. I have the chair of the Hub Arts and Culture, we are in a nonprofit incorporated and represent the interests of art sculpture and also the heritage. So this evening, I represent our committee and the friends for the Heritage House, Pascal Poiret. With me, I have like members committed from my group and also Monet Deschals, she's been, she was, she's part of the Hall of Fame for Cheyenne and she prepared the document that was circulated by the clerk prior to this meeting. Just to mention a little bit the mission of the committee. So the mission of the committee is simple, but essential, is to protect, preserve and give a new life to the Pascal Poiret Heritage House. So this historical house, the oldest one in Cheyenne, is a precious witness of Acadian identity and also our community is a collective good. I would like to mention like the cultural and heritage policy of the town. So the preservation of heritage site that are important is a municipal priority. And it's also a shared responsibility, so the Pascal Poiret House represents exactly like this type of sites. And we have the collective duty to protect, we are here to collaborate and share this responsibility with the town. To protect this house is to invest in our identity, like tourist attraction and our collective pride for today and the next 200 years. With the ongoing consultation, many of other groups were part of those consultations of last Tuesday. And it was the same conclusion that came out. We have to act now because once those heritage sites are lost, they cannot be rebuilt again. First, what's most critical before the winter, it's essential to cover the roof and seal it properly to avoid any further deterioration. As we know, like each the cycle of frost, thaw and rain increase the damage, we're talking about the simple measure. This evening, we're not asking for any resources, this evening, we are here to offer like a turnkey solution. We are giving you like a proactive solution and without any cost, we have financial support and certify and ensure entrepreneur who is waiting to do, to start the work now. All we need is your authorization. And someone mentioned also, there was like a red truck at the house today and there might be some works, ongoing work, if it's not the case, well, we're ready to go forward. But what we need is the okay from the town will not cost you anything, like no effort from your staff or no financial support. So with your authorization, we can start now, we are here like to work in collaboration and not to confront you. We want to walk hand in hand with the town supporter efforts and respect your processes and contribute to protect like heritage a symbol that is important for the town Cheyenne, while the long term discussions are being done. The Pascal Poiret House, it's a jewel, but a very, very opportunity, so this interretention is a act of responsibility and common sense and a demonstration of a community partnership together, we can stabilize the house today to better reinvent it for tomorrow. Thank you very much for listening to us. I'm here to answer any question if you have any. Thanks for your presentation and your offer. It's something we can certainly consider. We will check with the administration to see what are the latest things that we start or not, what's left to do. Maybe to prepare for the winter season and then we might, we could go back to you. I'm not sure like if we can decide, like I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where it's at, but it's certainly something like we can get back to you like soon, soon. And I think the council members appreciate this offer, so we might need some details to see like what, who will be like climbing on the roof of the house or things like that. Thank you very much for this. So we'll be waiting. This is a certify contractor that is doing like the construction professionally, councillor Paul Boudreau. So for the administration, I don't know who's responsible for this installation. So the conditions, now for the winter, how is it? Listen, it's not a building that was built last year, that's a new building. And I can tell you also, like a few meetings ago, I was asked a question that what type of maintenance we did to this building? And of course, like when we're doing what, everything possible to secure this building in this current condition without having to renovate it totally. A few days after I mentioned this comment, there was some leak like inside the house that caused some damages. So we secured this spot and we repaired the damages, the light damages that were done within the building. So we asked the contractor to look at any other problem areas. So for now, the building, we are being told is stable, if I can say it, but it's not like it was not recently built, so that's in the aging building and there are some improvement to be made, not only to the roofing, but to other spots. The front step, so we had to secure it. And I don't know if you notice, it's not accessible, so we put some kind of barrier because we have concern, like if something would but there's no impact like to the structure. It's only an impact of danger if something would, somebody would go on site. But we will continue to ensure that the document does not, building does not deteriorate further. And we are doing like inspection every once in a while to make sure whenever something happened, like we give the required attention until we get a long term decision on the future of the Pascal Poiret House, thank you. Following the offer of this community group, I would like maybe to propose more officially, so the town collaborates. I don't know if it's the time now to present a motion or later or the maybe the request from the councillors, I would like for the town to collaborate with them. I don't know, I'm not aware of the details or what the house looks like now. So with, because they're supposed to have, to get like a storm, like a snowstorm later this week. So how could we officialize this request? Do we need a motion or do we need, I could certainly make this motion, could be debated at the council level? Or just mandate, because there's two word, collaboration and the emergency on this file, so I could bring it later to this meeting, I know like we cannot bring motions, extra motions, but I can do it later and let the council decide what it would like to do with this request. What I can say for now, we got the letter from the group. It was last Thursday, at the same time, we got the request to make the presentation to the council. As a natural step, we would like to meet with the group to discuss, to see exactly like we're not ready like to make a recommendation to the council because we're not sure like who, what, when or where. So we have a contractor who came recently, did some work to stabilize the house and they will continue to do so as long as we are the owners of the building. I cannot tell you, if the council wants to take this road, well, it belongs, the decision is up to the council. But from the administration, the first and natural step would be like what they would need to do. They will sit down with the group, meet with the group, yes, we're ready to do so. And I would say also, as any other group, we're always open to see how we can better like collaborate. And either it's the Pascal Poiret House or any other file, we're always ready like to meet with the committed groups and we want to commit to contribute like on the file to try maybe comment round so we can make progress. In one comparison, if the arena was in the same condition of this house, I think it was even more urgent. So we have to act like very, very quickly, thank you, I will mention a little bit later. So for motion this evening on this matter, it's not part of the agenda, as you know. Maybe you could give a notice for a motion that would be brought to the next meeting, it would essentially be in January. It's, as we said, we would like to maybe to present a notice of motion. So no, we're not caught off guard and we vote on something that we do not have enough information to be comfortable, enough to make a decision. So I'm confident like the CEO like would meet with them and I understand like wanted to have this communication and to see the administration to communicate with the group. I know if it's done like before the holidays. And if I may, as like the group would have been there or not there, will continue to do what we do to ensure like the building remains safe and it does not deteriorate further. That's something we're supposed to do, that's any infrastructure we do, like if there's a leak, we will do it. The house maybe requires like more investment than usual. And because it's included in a wider discussion with the strategic planning, we are not authorized to this work before the council decides where we move that file, so until then, we will do everything possible for, so the building does not deteriorate further. To this, it was not discussing for the location of the house, it's just like to preserve it, really, like to preserve it in a good state. So the file on the location, it will come later, like in collaboration with all the group, this one is only to save the house. Thank you, councillor Boudreau. Councillor Brian. It's the same line of what councillor Boudreau was said, I would like maybe to propose some kind of timeline to bring it to the next meeting, so we could make the decision like at the next meeting. Unless the council members are comfortable enough to vote now. Just to give some hope, because they came here to do a presentation and we're hoping to, they get off like with semi good news or good news. For the next meeting, maybe? We always have to take into consideration, like December is not a regular month, so the last week and a half of December, there's not a whole lot happening. So do we have, we have like a staff that is on standby, but the institution will be on vacation. It just to tell you like it's a month, it's short. It's not very often like we get an offer, like a community group to take over, like to repair an asset that belongs to the town. I think the administration will communicate like with the group very shortly to see like if any work need to be done, like very short, soon. I know we will have some snow like for a couple of days, but maybe not a ton of snow, but might have nice weather after. It's just, it's just to make sure like we will take their offer like in a timely fashion and seriously. Thank you, councillor Brian. Thank you very much to the group. Number six point two. Regional plan for emergency measures, we have Cora Landry, he's a fire chief for, he's invited for the city of Moncton. Mister Landry is responsible like more for the regional emergency plan versus a municipal emergency plan, the floor rescuer, thank you, Mister Mayor, council members and staff members. So it's been a year and a half, we've been meeting 18 municipalities of the Kent, Westmoreland and Albert County. We are meeting to discuss on a standardized plan with the municipalities. So we have several municipalities that who adopted this plan and the idea is if ever we have an emergency, we're not waiting, hoping it's not too bad of an emergency, like each municipalities could help each other and have a plan. So your page 15 in your plans is the same in our plan and we speak the same language. That's being proposed this evening for the council to consider. In an emergency plan, I just want to talk a little bit about emergency measures, there are four phases in an emergency plan. There is like preparation, that's what's mentioned this evening, so what we can do to prepare in case of a major emergency. So to have a plan is the beginning, the next one, there's an incident, we will have to respond. Either like firefighter, ambulance, police. And then this is the recovery, after the incident, things are getting stabilized, it's how we rebuild the houses, how we clean the streets, etc. It's part of those phases and the last one is the mitigation. Is there, are there anything we can do at the municipality to prevent or reduce the risk that this incident has a low impact in the future, next one? And of course, everybody has a role to play, so the citizens of the town of Cheyenne, they do have a role to play. So they will, they will try to manage the emergency by themselves, either like first aid or try to remove like water from their basement. But if they cannot like do it themselves, so they will call the town and the town of Cheyenne will send the resources into public works or emergency measures. If ever like the town of Cheyenne needs some help, so you sign like a couple of months ago and 18 municipalities sign this agreement. It means we can help each other, so we have provision to help each other in case of emergency. If ever like the town of Cheyenne need more help than usual, they can go with the province and the province can go ask the federal government to help. So the citizens, so we ask them to be ready, like to be self sufficient for about three days, 72 hours. It's as simple as having like a kit, it's not as simple to have a kit in your basement, but to have a plan, where will I go? Do I have a family? If I have like a power outage for three days, do I have enough medication? Do I have enough money in my safe for, to live like without the internet? And we are asking like the citizen to be ready for 72 hours, that's their responsibility. So it gives the chance or the opportunity to get organized, like we'll help like the residents of the municipalities, but but at least we have a couple of days trying to get organized, so next one. So what is like the responsibility of the town, so the so we have to appoint like an emergency coordinator? And then we have to prepare and approve a plan. So what you are considering is to have a plan and approve, prepare and approve that plan. The second one, so this, we have to train, this is another like obligation required by the province, so we give some training, so we take the training and we will exercise a plan. The fourth one, it probably did it already, but you can do more, is to have like a mutual aid agreement. So this, this is done with partners, either with other municipalities, Red Cross or you can have some agreement. And the last one, if ever you need, you have to declare like a state of local emergency. And a state of local emergency is if ever you need like additional authorities, nothing to do with financial. It's not to get some money from the province or the federal government, it's really like if you want like to a curfew, like everyone to be at home like by 10 o'clock PM, just gives you the authority to do, like it has nothing to do with funding. So that's what like the Emergency Measures Act says, like what you need to do and where you have the authority. The plan, as we mentioned, we would like also ideally, everyone would have it, even at the provincial level. At least in the municipality, if we have each the same plan, we would make things easier to help each other. So I will go into the guidelines, so the next one. So there are five categories in the plan, so the first one would be the introduction. So we're talking here about the authority, the concept, the mission, vision of the plan. And who should have copies of the distribution list and introduction quite general, the next one, section two. So we're talking about general information, so maybe just in a nutshell, like which responsibility, what is the responsibility of the municipality, what is the responsibility of the province? So it gets more into detail, who does what, like in case of emergency, a little bit different, we are influenced by the state. But in the states, their law is different, like in Canada, it's the municipalities, it's the responsibility of the municipality to manage emergencies. And it also defines like the level of response like for the authorizations. So this one here is at the fire station, how do we activate that? What are the conditions and the levels? So there are several, we can do a mountain drink, partially activate it or we can fully activate it, so it describes those things. And it also talks about the conditions imposed the minister. So an emergency measure like it's provincial, so during COVID, we have declaration of emergency measures. The municipality can declare state of emergency only in the subdivision, it doesn't have to be the whole town. Explain a little bit like the mutual aid agreement, like the trainings, well, in general, the one we recommend to the municipality. It's interesting, like if we would have a plan that would be very similar to all the municipalities, we could have all the same training as any other profession, there is a language. And it's different, so if I'm started to talk about the acronyms and the languages, I could probably lose you very. The third section, the hazard, so this is all hazard plan, it does not specify like a snowstorm or hurricane. This is a consequences of this hazard, how we will manage the consequences, so it's quite generic to see how either manage or reduce like the risk. What we thought would be good to identify like 32 potential, possible dangers. The chance that there will never launch in Cheyenne are really, really low, but it's still there. We only have one paycheck, what we should consider. But part of the exercise is to see what would be the risk and the consequences and the frequency. So you will not spend a lot of time on the avalanche, maybe a snowstorm that might be something like, we should spend a bit more, so section four. So the response, so what is the role of the ministry? What is the organigram, what it looks like during the emergency, so the town has an organigram like for the day, but during an emergency, there is an organigram. What does it look like? It's generic, so if you, if you help us in Moncton, I help you here, it's the same languages, the same positions, it will be easier. And once again, it explains that just to let you know like we, we have an emergency operation center like by the province. The municipalities, you have the one at the fire station, the provincial one, there are centers, like there's 12 different response centers, the province to support us. And then there is a provincial center that is located in Frederickton. And then of course, how do we conclude an emergency, what it looks like? Once everything's done, everybody's back, back home and safe and sound. So the action plan, the report after the action, the incident is all included like in this book. These are the guidelines, main component of the plan, so there's 100 pages, I will not go like through all of this. You had emergencies in the past, as you know, like either like floods that you experienced, so the plan covers those. Snowstorms, ice storms. So it's more frequent, major fires, either forest fires or this one here in the building, so so these are the times you should activate the emergency plan. And we have big festivals, music concerts, etc. And should consider also the plan. And we know like today, anything can happen, so we need to have a plan just in case like something hap, a disaster happens during a festival or any recreational activities. Power outages, well, the cause of the outages is more or less important, is what do we do? Like if there is, this have no power for three, four, four days a week, one month, two months, do we have a plan for this? So this plan, the plan here is to manage all those demands. And we need to have a little bit more details in Cheyenne, to say like where would be the warming center like for the town. So the detail is not in this plan, so this plan is really a high level plan, how we manage it? And then the town could get more into the details to see what it would work specifically for Cheyenne. Thanks for your attention and I'm certainly open to question, English. Thank you very much, Mister Fire Chief. We have, I know Mister CEO would like to add something, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Listen, I might, I would like to add like to the Fire Chief's presentation, the as a regional opinion like the CEOs. The, as a re- regional opinion like the CEOs. For many years, like we've been meeting like since the reform. And, and the question, how we can prepare ourselves or collaborate, like it came on the floor almost right from the beginning. And when we saw the example, how Monten reviewed the the, the function like for the like the emergency measures, like a lot, many municipalities, so the benefits. Could we have maybe look into a, a great, a bigger like regional collaborations? I would like to thank Conrad for his leadership to pilot this file in a regional point of view because today, because of a vision that was more local. But all the CEOs of the regions and firefighters and and the protection instances, like they got together and they see like a value. As Conrad already mentioned, as from a more local perspective for us, I would like to thank like Danal, the Fire Chief is now here and Tina. Because they work a lot like on collaboration over the last couple of months to, to get where we are. Thanks to Tina and Danal. And thank you Conrad for, for the work you did like on this file. Thank you. Question from Councilor Paul Boudreau. Thank you for your presentation. Just a question, I'm curious. So if we decide this emergency, is it only during a natural disaster, like say like there's a shoot or riot, shooting riot? If it happens? Thank you, Councilor Boudreau for your question. Absolutely. And the, the cause, well. And so now it's so complicated in the world, even like like the cars in the parade, like the Christmas parade in Monten. And it's part of our plan. If a car decided like just to, to hurt people. It's either like caused by human or natural causes, but also like for festivals. It's not an emergency, but there, there could be a possible emergency. So it's important. So we use this plan, like the concert, the country concert, and yet we use the plan. When we had Guns N' Roses, like in Monten, we used that same plan too. And I will go by ACDC and all those major councils, like concert with many thousands of people. So it's the same concept. We cannot think about all the possibilities, but but this plan like let, let, let us like have an organization to manage just again. Thank you very much. And keep up the good work. Next item, six point three. Mr. Phil Rabichaud. It will give us an update under review of municipal plan. Evening, Mr. Mayor. So this evening, just a brief presentation, essentially like just to give you an update on the development of a municipal plan and also to talk about the next steps and what we need to do like in order to make progress on this plan. So this is the agenda for today. So I just want to give you a little bit of context. So what was done until now? I will talk, be mentioning the steps we need to do and find, I will be talking about the next steps. Just a reminder, like a municipal plan, what, what it is, it's it's a vision of development of the municipality and it's created with objective and, and the policy. So it ga- guides like commercial residential development and also the environment and the bylaw. It's how we implement like the vision of the development from the council. And then we divide like the municipality in different zones with the allowed users and also general distribution like setbacks, height, landscape, et cetera. And why do we need to do this? Well, your plan is from twenty sixteen. The one for the, the LSD, so the one for Boba Saint West, it, it goes back to twenty sixteen and we saw like major sending changes like in during the pandemic in twenty twenty. So more pressure from development. Like a demographic growth and we had a major transformation on the type of buildings. More density, like a le- less a single family dwelling. So we need to adapt and change the plan. Just to show you like what's mentioned in orange and yellow, like delineates like the the area of the Chediac municipal plan from twenty sixteen and the rest that includes also Chediac's Cape, Skodoq, Point du Chain. It's the, it was part of the Boba Saint West plan, which goes back to twenty sixteen. So this, what I will mention, like each phase to do, I will go to the next slide because, because we'll go one by one. So we, so we, we met like during the years, like we said how important it was to do the preliminary studies just to, to have the information so we can write a good plan. So there were many studies that were done since then. And first you had adopted your strategic plan that informs of your priorities. And there's a lot of things that inform what we need to focus on like in the municipal plan. And there are also some studies also like on the housing need that were done like to show like what you had in the past and what we can expect like in term of the housing, how many units should be built. And there's a lot of study done on the infrastructure. That would be important for Chediac, especially like on, on the sewer like infrastructure and also like a transportation plan that showed where to focus and where we could make some changes. And I would like to mention the preliminary studies is done. There's also like another in-depth study that was done and it will be presented soon with the summary of all the studies. The next step, which is very important is to have like a municipal plan committee. And the reason for this, well, is for the Plan 360, they do not work in silos. We need to get some feedback and discuss with, with the orientation of the priorities. And it's a committee, we can report on a regular basis and show the progress and just have like conversations with them. To have a municipal committee would be very, very important. And the composition, whether it could be like a mix of citizen administration of the town and there are many different combinations we could do like on this committee. And the committee and Plan 360 would come with the fine, come up with the final plan and presented like to the councils. It's not only from us, but the, the whole municipalities and citizens and champions of the municipality. And I can tell you like we would do the work, like, so they were, they would be there to give us some feedback. And phase two would be the preliminary consultation. And what we mean with this? And we want to do like a public consultations. So you want to get the opinion of the citizen on the, what happened in the past, like the trends. And also what they would like to see in the future, like if we want to, if we want to present the products, we want to get preliminary consultation to see like what they think about the, the trends in the future. And we would start also the consultation with stakeholders that would include like provincial department and also municipal organization, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Chediac and also the Chediac Bay Watershed Association and et cetera. Another group discussion also. Which other group we should consult to make sure we consult everyone. In terms of consultation strategy, we're talking maybe of having an open house day. We would have like boards that can, and people can get some general information. And we had, we would have some employees from Plan 360 to talk to the citizen, to have conversation with them and answer their questions. And we could also like publish a municipality a website to track the progress of the municipal plan. And there would be some surveys that the people could fill it. And there would be also interactive map to, you could add some points or guide for specific things. It's more or less ready, this product, but but we would still need some feedback to, to make sure we asked the right question. And the content of the website, website is okay. And once we had like all the preliminary comments from the stakeholders and the citizen and all the in-depth studies, we will start like the preparation of the plan. So we, so we would write like the first draft of the plan. And we do it in collaboration with the, the committee a little bit back and forth to, to make sure the orientation is the, the one of the municipal. And once we have a final product, we do like a second round of public consultation. And then we publish like the, the draft on the website and we present also to the public consultations. What it could look like. Then we could show like the citizens, the major changes of the plan and what would they bring. And the goal is to collect like their comments on the final product. And then we would have also like a refinement process. We would do like the last adjustment, we would have a session with the council to, to present like the plan in its entirety. And once like the plan is finalized and everybody is agree, we would go to the legal process. And you know, like the legal process is similar to rezoning and it's important like to have a finished product before we go to that set. Because when we start the legal process, it's not, then you cannot do any major changes. So we have to do it before with the consultation, even if there are public hearings and public presentation like during the legal prod- process. We want to make sure like we captured like the opinion of the citizen. The next steps would be to establish a municipal committee plan and also to look for dates like for a public consultation, preliminary consultations. Essentially, that's the step we're at. So we would have to look at creating a committee. So do you have any, any suggestions like on the size of the committee? Are we talking about three people or thirty? Uh, maybe five to ten people? So in other municipalities, like, is it something you did? Is it a combination of the, of the council members, public, there's all kind of combination, do a mix like a councillors, like members of the public administration and some also decided council member would only be citizens and administration. So we see a mix of the two really. And how long, like this commit, it's a committed of how long? Like it's not only like two meetings, of course. Will it last? Maybe many meetings that will last maybe a year. I would say like maybe one meeting per month or every two months, but it would be on a regular basis. Perfect. So it answers like a few of my questions. It's maybe too, too many details, but in the map like the municipal plan, like the old Chediac territory and the one also for Boba Saint West. So would there be? I always understood like it, it was a combination of those two plans. So we would have one plan, but this plan. Will they have like urban component and the rural component or? So I was wondering, like when I saw visually the, the maps, I wa- I was thinking like the section at the right-hand side. Whereas Skodoq is, would it make sense? Like it would make sense to, to have it like in the same regulations? Because it's part of Chediac, because, because Chediac included it many years. So it's, it's a very good question. I did not mention, but but yes, it's, it's to have a plan like for all, so with different, many, many different zones. So we call it different boroughs, different neighborhoods with different visions. And some areas would be more rural than others. So the development trends would be a little bit different. Such as downtown or I see I have other council members with questions. Councilor Alakomni, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Phil. In terms of timeline, what do you see as a timeline? From A to Z? I prepared one. That is very preliminary and it's difficult to say like because there are some steps to do like before we can go like to the next step. In terms of a timeline, like I showed like all like the the phases and it, it definitely goes accordingly. We could look maybe at the beginning of twenty twenty seven before we can start the legal process. We would be like in the a public hearing and the reading. So it's, it's more or less a year. As soon as possible, longer than a year. In terms of now, another consultation.
And then you said the legal processes. Okay, that's the first question. Is it typical? You seem to have opens, uh, pub- sessions open to public. Is that, that's typical? Would it be seen as typical or to have sessions that, that are in the rural part of Chediac? Would that be a typical thing? Yeah, that would be typical. You have a large territory, so it's normal to have different sessions. There's no problem doing more than one session, but you to, you want to do a consultation to establish the draft and then to have feedback, but you could do cer- many consultations instead of just doing it once in one place. It would be on several, over several different days and, or night or evenings. Would it be seen as normal during the, this process to have a consultation with elected officials? As part of the one-year process? Ultimately, it's the elected officials who will decide. But sometimes, you seem to be saying at some point it's so solidly put together that it's hard to, to change the vision. It would be important to do some updates of the changes and keep you apprised of that. I agree with your questions. Thank you. I, with your answers, I mean to say. Uh, great. Councilor Joelle Depret, your worship, just he, Orona did touch upon my, what I meant to ask in terms of elected officials. Will the council have some, something contribute to the plan in terms of our issues or our concerns before it changes again?
The only difference, uh, in, in discussing with Plan 360, the only thing that would happen with, with Chediac. It's an elector, it's election year, twenty twenty-six is an election year. That means that even if we form a committee with elected officials at the start of the year, there, they may not be present at the end of twenty twenty-six. So that's the only thing that might change the composition of the council, not the council, but the committee rather. Do you understand what I'm getting at here?
Councilor Depret, it's a little hard to put elected officials on, knowing that they may not close out the work that they started. That's the only thing that we discussed, which haven't yet come to a formal composition of that committee. I understand for the committee, but maybe we could have a working session with elected officials just now to give, to provide our issues and our vision. It could be brought before the next council. In terms of the objectives that we've assessed at the start, the first meetings will likely take place before the elections, I would imagine. So as part of that vision, yeah, it's quite likely that's possible. Yes, indeed. And even for council members who are here, who might not be here in June twenty twenty-six. You're a member of the public, you have the right to give your opinion as well. Nothing would prevent you from, from participating in the process, but not as, not necessarily as a council member. There, there's your, there'll be opportunity to provide your reflections, your comments and your input on that front. Councilor Janis Karmian, thank you, your worship. You mentioned, uh, housing needs study. As part of those studies, are we looking at what's available? What's open? Or just do, do we just do a study of what we're, we think? Are we studying what's available right away?
What you mean, like how many apartments are vacant?
Yeah, how many duplexes, how many side-by-sides, how many apartments are vacant in the town of Chediac? We do a, a, a housing needs study, are we studying what's available? Those studies are already complete. They were presented here at the council. Who has, who's responsible for looking at what's available in town? Nobody. I don't, I don't necessarily understand your question. And you mean they're talking about the vacancy rate?
Nobody. I don't, I don't necessarily understand your question. And you mean they're talking about the vacancy rate?
That is something that evolves over time, but if I'm not mistaken, your worship, there's no study on the vacancy rate done in Shadia? No, not really. Not to my knowledge. There might have been some attempts to provide some ideas, but nothing really formal. We're too small for Statistics Canada, so that they could do in-depth studies on that. Do we think that should be added to our Plan 360? It's not something that they can do. They don't have the authority to do it. Don't have the authority. They, they have authority, they're, they're planners. You go on the private market and the town is not authorized to do anything either. As I said, Statistics Canada, well, they have a mandate, they have some laws that regulate their authority, like anyone else. And as I said, they focus on larger centers, Greater Moncton, for example. They don't just take DEP, they don't just take Riverview. And they come up with a number, they can come up with a number uh for southeastern New Brunswick, that's what the, the Regional Service Commission did. To gather southeastern New Brunswick data, they were able to give us an idea, sense of the differences between Shadia and uh other more rural regions. We were able to get that. I think that those studies in terms of housing, they were done through the Regional Service Commission for the benefit of all of its members, not just Shadia. The other municipalities in southeastern New Brunswick as well. Would you like to add something? Had, does the, is the town entitled uh to do that, even if we don't have Statistics Canada support? Are we able to see what vacancy rate? There's no bylaw that prevents it. Could we, that allows it rather. I'm not sure if we'd be able to adopt such a bylaw. We, as we discussed those, with those uh owners, do you have fifty in the block? Why do you have three empty? Okay, but we aren't making an effort, a continuous effort uh on that front. And it's up to the participation of people. What, where I'm going, coming with this is where I'm coming with this is, with this Plan 360, if we do zoning bylaws and make changes in terms of apartments, we're not really properly doing studies, we, we're making changes. We have lots of apartment buildings and, and some vacancy. There's some apartment uh that are, uh, buildings that are empty and there's some of them are three quarters empty. So as a town, I think we have a responsibility to ensure that we don't continue to develop when development is not necessary. And understand it's the tax base and all that, but at some point, either we have a town with uh empty apartments and then, then they'll just stay there. I don't think, find that's responsible on our part. And I wonder if it fit in Plan 360. I mean, I can answer. We don't have the vacant, the availability rate for apartments, but we do have data on trends. Some years where we built a lot of multifamily dwellings and in the last years we see tens are, are train, uh, trends are, are changing with different sizes. So there's some conclusions that you can extract from that, from the data. What I mean to say is that the precise number in terms of the vacancy rate, it's like, it's not like in Moncton and DEP. But we do see trends that, and you can extract some uh data from that. Thank you. You said exactly what I was going to say. Let's not forget as well, the main role of the municipality is to determine what zoning is appropriate for which zone. What will be developed there? It's up to a private company or, or an individual person to determine what they want to build there and if they want to take the risk. Of building an apartment building, a, a business or a multifamily dwelling, if zoning allows it. As a municipality and you as a council, we determine, do we want this type of development there? Or do we want a different type of zoning? And as Phil mentioned, the information that exists, they have access to it, they can extrapolate some things, there's a new census that will happen in twenty twenty six and we'll get some new data out of that. There's information available, even if we haven't made a specific study on housing. Once again, the, the role of the council is not to determine, we want to put uh, we want to build fifteen apartment buildings in, in, in next year. We, we can say the zone and then there's a, a private company or, or business owners or investors who decide that the zoning allows that and there and we want to build. Thank you. Councilor Omero Brian, thank you. Thank you, Phil, for your presentation. Quick question. This is for this municipal plan. Will this bring zoning changes or recommending, recommendations for zoning changes? Yes, a hundred percent. That's the objective, is to assess. There's lots of changes into the town over the past few years as well. So the process for zoning, for changing zoning won't change. It will remain as such, right? Uh, when, when they're rezoning? The process will remain the same. It's a law, it's, it's, it's under the law. There's a reason why we do a public hearing, three readings. It's because we have to do it that way. We're obliged. I can complete. The process, as, as his worship said, does not change. It's, it's, it's the way it's set, set out in the law. It might occur that uh you could, there could, such, changes could be suggested, that such and such a region might be zoned in one way, but we might want to zone it differently. That can happen, but the process, well, the process to adopt municipal plan will be the same as for a zoning uh bylaw, uh, a public hearing and three readings. This just covers the whole territory by way of example. So could we get more R1, for example, in town? Could it change? It could change. So there's, it's part of the process, the objective is to look at our zones, our zoning and see if there's any adjustments to be made. So there could be any combination, really. Thank you. Councilor Podbudro. So this has nothing to do with bylaws? No, nothing, no, except for the, the zoning bylaw. Given that we're going to mobilize people around this, it's a great exercise around consultation. Or are we doing both at the same time? Janice, uh, where is, we're bombarded, people are bombarded with consultants and know what to answer. So we're contacting for multifunctional center, arts and culture. I, given that we have the expertise with Plan 360, we have expertise with staff to mobilize both.
The zoning, the bylaws and all that, we can tackle two, two birds with one stone. No?
It's mixing apples and oranges. We're really trying to focus on municipal plan. Once that is done, one doesn't prevent the other though. It's not, not necessarily obliged to have public consultations for municipal bylaws. There are already processes established. We do have to present it publicly and publish them on our websites, in newspapers and so, so on. Let's send letters to people, uh, get the letters from people who support or object to it. They're, they're two separate things. We do have to remind people that there are bylaws. There's a zoning bylaw. Uh, same principle as municipal bylaws, yes, but, but mixing apples and oranges, it makes a nice salad, but uh it might have more of an effect, uh, might make it a bit heavier. That's my opinion on the matter. So the moral of the story, it's one fruit salad at a time? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Robichaud. Happy, pleased to see that we're starting to envision the steps. It's clearer. We knew that we're preparing things since twenty twenty five. It's good to see that part and next part and then next part. We're going to make some progress and we'll end up adopting that municipal plan. So item seven, another under, nothing under item seven, but for eight, it's the, the police report. It's for for the Regional Service Commission for the Southeast, just for information purposes. There's no representative from the RCMP here tonight. So that at least it's a publication that they provide each three, every three months. So it's for your information and we will do any follow-up with Mr. Hachet when he, when he's available. Councilor Janis Combi, thank you, your worship. I was looking at the report. When you look at the occurrences of things, it's a bit worrying when you see Shadia has twelve hundred and eleven occurrences compared to the regions around. They don't even have uh they have less than half. It goes along with population as well. One community that's a quarter of our size will have a lot, a smaller numbers, it takes a nuts. There's that as well. I do understand that the number is bigger, it's a bigger raw number. I, I do have questions around that myself. But there's a difference between ourselves and Salisbury, for example. So it can seem a bit worrying, but I'd like to know what the statistics, what the statistics are in Greater Moncton as well. So uh somebody, would somebody in the new year come to speak to us to give us some more information around this? It's the RCMP, our sergeant, Mr. Hachet. Is he, is he invited to come? He's invited to all meetings? He's not always available though. Maybe we can reserve him a little earlier. We can try. Thank you. So Mr. CAO, it is your report. Thank you, your worship. Given this is my last report for twenty twenty five officially, I would like to start and take the opportunity to thank the staff. Uh, while it is my, I have the pleasure to prevent, to present this report every meeting, it's not just me, it's behind all this, I, behind all the tasks. It's a, it's a group effort and we were really lucky in the town of Shadia to have such great people. And it's, it's an analogy I'm, I'm offering, they wear the, the Shadia flag and, and it's thanks to them, it inspires me. I aimed, to aim higher, to continue along this path. I'd like to thank the staff for all of the work they've done over the past year. And we're already trying, we're rolling up our sleeves for twenty twenty six and even if twenty twenty five isn't quite done yet. If it's not done, it means that there's uh still files outstanding that we have to finish tonight. There's a deadline meeting, uh, meeting with some files that we've been working on for the past few months that where there's decisions to be made tonight. But let's not forget that we have to close out the year to prepare uh audit, very financial audits. Even if the meeting stopped, uh, work doesn't work for, uh, stop for staff. And there's public works, they're very excited. There's some, might be some snow coming tomorrow, they're preparing the equipment. They're ready to uh go to work. Just as the, with the other snowfalls, they do exemplary work for our citizens. It's also my pleasure. I spoke uh about this at several, on several occasions over the course of the year. By the end of this week, all uh staff employees, municipal employees will have had a, a, a performance evaluation. But what's more important, it's a dialogue. It, it allows us to see where we are at with the employee, where we're heading, what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, what we're asking of them, what we're asking, where we're seeking improvements. So to, to try to have a clear vision of the strategic plan to get alignment in the right way. It was a big file to take up, but by the end of this week, all of the employees shall have had their evaluation. I think a lot of staff appreciated the exercise. It's been a long time since they were assessed uh or evaluated uh by the municipality. A few files upcoming that we're still working on. Obviously, the Maison Pascal Poiret house, we're still working on that. And there, and there've been consultations over the, the last week. We're still assessing the building. We're foreseeing that in January to come back to council with their report that we are working on. We're working on it to, related to the various consultations and studies that we're taking on. In terms of the recreation center, uh, a few weeks ago, we presented the preliminary report for the business plan. We received some comments, some information and we're working to, seeking uh to get those information, to have a final version of the report. But the, the site analysis as well, that we will be bringing to you, well, we hope at the start of the year, probably at the start of the year. At the start of the year, we're also foreseeing that there be a workshop, an internal workshop with staff to analyze and make sure that we're meeting all of our benchmarks that we'd like to have, that we want to make sure that this file continues to move forward and move forward in a well, I didn't want to say in accelerated way, to make sure that we lose the momentum we have on this file. We also received a preliminary version of the report. It's the Plan 360 uh report. We're trying to coordinate with the consultant so that he can come, uh, present the file to the council. We would have liked to have, that to have been before Christmas, but we're having a hard time coordinating a date. There's another file with the same consultant uh to come meet with the council. So we're aiming for start of January. It would be more realistic to bring those things before council. We are also, well, for the past few months, uh, we've been working on bylaws, governance bylaws. As in, as you see in the strategic plan, be it the Ethics Code, the procedural bylaw, all the various other bylaws, we're also working on a whole host of bylaws related to policies that we'd like to bring before uh council, before uh municipal elections. Including the ones I just mentioned. Why May? Well, the election will be in May. And although it's an end, it's a start for a new council. And we are already working and preparing uh an orientation manual and orientation sessions for a new council to try to train them so that they're ready to execute their new mandates. So one a year is closing out, but there's a lot of things to do yet uh from here to May. In closing, I would like to thank the council. I started by thanking staff, but now I would like to thank the council. I would like to thank you for your leadership, your patience and most especially your decorum during meetings. We often, we're seeing a trend in other places. Well, perhaps debate heats up and it's not respectful, but I can tell you, that's not the case here in Shadia. Often, debate is seen as being negative. I would say that you have constructive debate. You do your duty, you ask questions, you want transparency. You are doing the things that you should be doing to be accountable to your citizenry. And I do thank you on that front. I congratulate you on your commitment to our citizens and the collegiality that you have as a group when you're making decisions. I would like to thank you for the confidence that you bring to staff. Although you sometimes ask some, you know, pretty eh, big questions. It, it, it's, it's not seen as an attack. We see it, we see it as you doing your duty. Please continue to do your duty, do it properly. We are there to help you uh to execute your decisions, to apply your decisions and your vision that you have as a municipality. I want to thank you for the conference that you've entrusted in us, not just in me, and, but also with the rest of staff. I hope that during the holidays, you'll be able to get some rest, recharge because there'll be a little marathon that'll happen next year. Uh, and I uh wish you the, all the best of luck. Thank you, Mr. CAO. I'm sure that the council members appreciate that as well as staff. I do have a question from Councilor Orlana Combi. Thank you, your worship. So you're gonna come back to us in January for the arena, this pool, et cetera? The recreation center? Yes, the recreation center. Councillor Boudreau has raised this on several occasions. We really don't know what we want. We were, we saw that we've seen the wish list of what the citizens would like to have. So that means that we have to, there has to be an area that can take all that in. But maybe we only need half of the land that we think we need. I learned during the presentation, during Judd's presentation, that there would be a pickleball court. I'm not saying that there weren't supposed to be any or not have some or, or whatever, but I thought we had a center. And then somebody has ideas, wish lists for, that we'd add, maybe add some other things. So there's more land and more area. In my little mind, I was saying, there's pickleball right across from the arena. Right across from the fire hall. We already have the land. Everything's there. Why not expand the pickleball? It's already there and everybody would go to the same center. And that takes more area, more land. I'm saying this, I, I, I'm not even know what the recommendation you're gonna provide. I'm preoccupied, concerned that we might want to buy more land than we need. And I think that Councillor Boudreau has raised this point several times. I'm raising the main, the same concern. I'm not against the, that you come before us with a recommendation. But I have lots of questions about this. I'm just saying that going forward, I don't want to buy land that we don't need. I want to buy the land that we need. If you'll allow. Obviously, evidently, I will, I, I, yes, whether the center be X or Y in terms of size, we'll always try to foresee what the site will need for the next 50 years for its service life. The last thing we want to do, and I'll use Festival Arena as by way of example, Festival Arena, it's a great place. It's been there for 50 years. It's used, but if we want to add a pool on the site, if we want to add a gym, it's nearly impossible to add it on the existing site and have parking and you always have to foresee, despite the fact that the center was built, might have size X, we need to plan for size Y. Talking about a pickleball court. I can tell you that DIP, they hardly ever talk of pickleball. They're talking about cricket. They want a cricket, uh, field. And Chediac, could we ever imagine that we talk about a cricket, uh, field? Maybe we're not there now, but maybe in 50 years, we'll have a population or the sport will expand and we'll need to find a location. The site for sure and then the assessment will take into account expansion, a future expansion. These are all great questions that you can ask when the analysis will be presented to council. Thank you. Councillor Paud Boudreau, yes, thank you. I'm also going to speak to the intergenerational center. I just got some feedback from, uh, from staff, when will the council get be involved? There's great reports and it could be the next step. But it seems like right now it's the consultants and staff that are pushing this project. To my knowledge, it's a complex for our citizens and we are here to represent our citizens. It's a question, when will we, comes back to Councillor Coria's comment, when will we sit together? It's, it's the, it's the council that will always take, make a decision. That's how it works. But will there be a committee that will be established? Uh, that, uh, committee could visit other sites, whether the pros and cons of another facility that could meet our needs. You're absolutely right, Eve, our future needs. I am worried about this. I'm worried that the process is moving forward and we're being brought recommendations by consult, by consultants and we accept it or not. We're asking questions. Uh, so what's your feedback? When will be, when will we be involved? I would say that's an excellent question. I think that you need to be involved. Uh, at what moment? I think that the session that we're aiming to have at the start of the year, there's a workshop. You have to keep into, uh, keep in mind, uh, what's the council wants to see, what's, uh, how they want to proceed. In our, as part of our reflection, we have to look at something. I can't tell you exactly right now is it X or Y? I don't have the answer. But I can definitely tell you that it will be part of our reflection when we gather to discuss this file in the new year, very early in new year. I want to make it very clear, that committee won't be doing fundraising. They're gonna, gonna paint the walls. I, I want, I see this as supporting the staff and, uh, upper staff and supporting their, in the recommendation and moving the file forward. The other, and see and follow along how the, the, the project is moving. Well, you hear, you hear me. Yes, absolutely. Uh, we have to think about it, yes, and but definitely you have a role to play. We'll come back to you in the new year with recommendations and it will be up to the council to decide what wants to do. What's your feedback on this, your worship? I'll repeat the same thing as Mr. CAO said. In terms of right now, staff with those consultants are seeking information. They're seeking expertise. Somebody asked me, how much will this part of the center cost? I have no idea. I'm going to seek out somebody who can get me that information. All of that information will come back to council, the municipal council. Uh, so they can be digested and analyzed and understood. And after that, at some point, and I can't tell you exactly what date, what week, but at some point, the council will have to decide. So among all this whole list that we've been, that's been presented to all of us, is it conceivable to do 100% of this? Or should we look at doing less? Phase one, phase two. You can't, you don't want 18 phases. That's too much, too long. So your grandchildren are will already be in the, uh, buried before then. What's foreseeable? What can we do as a first phase? And after that, then we can really align our efforts in, in terms of fundraising. To find government partners. It depends on them a bit as well too. Somebody were to tell me, how much money will the federal be contributing? I have no idea. Not, I don't have any idea yet. I have no idea how much they can contribute. They've just announced their budget. We don't know the details yet. So there are many things to seek out before we're in a position to say we can do this, make this choice and we can pull it off. It's one thing to choose something. Yes, I'd like to have it all. But if we're not able to move forward with 100% of the thing, well, at some point you have to say, we'll have to adjust the plan. I'll close it with this. It's a personal opinion, a personal experience and, and these committees, you want to move to move. There's good synergy with the council here to move that file forward. Sylvain, that is a good point. A committee, uh, if there's election, there's no, the committees for four or five months. You do a committee in September, October, you've already lost eight or nine months. Because there's an election, yes, it will take place, regardless of what we do. Work can be done nonetheless. The current council still is authorized to make decisions. However, we won't decide from here to next May that we're building tomorrow or as of next week. It's only really later. So the function of the current council is to move the file forward. There might be some things, uh, and so some decisions to direct the effort. And after that, it's up to the new council to take up the, the, the challenge after that. So there's, there's budget forecasts of 100 million, over 100 million, and we discussed it for two, two, three hours on these projects. That's where I'm seeing with a committee, with a very precise mandate, a very dynamic mandate, they could really move this file forward. You know my position on this file. Thank, great. Thank you, Councillor Boudreau. Thank you, Eve, and thank you, Roger. So. So now we're on nine. No recommendations from the Regional Service Commission in terms of zoning for tonight. Nothing on unfinished business. So new items, new business. I think we have four requests for financial contributions. Is it the CAO that will be presenting those? Just the, the first one? I might do a presentation before we do enter the debate phase. We have received a few funding requests, grant requests. We received a few lately. And others we received during the, the process. Uh, for example, Beau Sejour, we admitted it, uh, we, with by accident, we apologize for that. But there are four requests that exist that we want to discuss with the council to see how they'd like to treat, deal with them. So the first one is, uh, Beau Sejour. The second is a request from LGR School relating to a sports team. The third is relating to the Hub Arts and Culture. And the last is a request from the Point du Chenne Recreation Center. So the one from Point du Chenne, I'd like to specify the region of Point du Chenne pays an annual amount to see the operation of the center. So the residents of Point du Chenne pay a special tax. They pay a special tax for the operation of the center. And since municipal reform, there's a reserve that fund that's been accumulating within that. So they want to take the reserve fund that has been accumulating as well as make a request to council for the balance. This is for the project that they want to accomplish. So the resolution for that project specifically is for an additional amount. There's already an existing amount within the, the, for surpluses from previous years. 25 odd thousand that have been accumulated, accumulated. You want to use that amount. And they also would like to request a special amount, a project from the council to complete the project with that additional amount of money. We might see to a more explicit, uh, presentation. Could the councillor present, uh, start? Thank you very much. Thank you for that overview. So we're gonna, one motion at a time, basically. We'll treat them individually. It's for four different things that are not related to, to each other. So in terms of Radio Beau Sejour, you have the documents in hand. Would somebody like to read it? The motion, Madam Deputy Mayor, thank you, your worship. Be resolved that municipal council approve the administration's recommendation and provide a grant of $1,500 from the council's special projects budget I-28253 to Radio Beau Sejour as requested. I so move, your worship, moved by Deputy Mayor Sivik Boudreau, seconded by Councillor Boudreau. I saw your hand. Any questions on this one, Councillor Paud Boudreau? I support it. I support it. I like it when it goes fast. So all those in favor shall say aye. Contradicted nay. Motion carried. Now I'd ask. Councillor? So for the second one, in the order I have, it's a bit different than the order that you presented it. That's fine. I'll present it as it appears in your documents. I received some correspondence at the start of November. It's the, the group called Le Hub. They were looking for a grant relating to their center. Their, uh, the, where they want, the, the office space where they'd like to be housed. You might be surprised with our recommendation. But, uh, we wanted to paint a picture of the, the different contributions that the group took up over the last year. We're not saying it's not a good project. Uh, it, it seems like to us like we're missing information to provide a positive recommendation. It's a 2026 request. Um, uh, we'll see the, the request coming in 2026 from the group. It doesn't really give a lot of margin for the other organizations, uh, that might be doing, making requests. That's why we've recommended, uh, as requested, uh, as, as recommended. Given, let's say that the, the council wants to make a 2026 contribution to this project. We would potentially like there to be conditions. So, uh, that the financing of the various organizations be confirmed before the municipality were to grant that amount. So it might mean that the council can grant the amount, but not before they've secured their provincial funding. All the various levels of government. It's not just a blank check. So, so it's, it secures, it makes things safer. Uh, where certain conditions that should be applied if the, uh, council were to go with a recommendation other than that of staff. Thank you for the explanation. Councillor Leno Cormier, would you like to read it? Yes, your worship.
I so move, uh, moved by Councillor Leno Cormier, seconded by Jean-Claude Bertin. Any questions on the motion, Councillor Paud Boudreau? The others were saying where it came from, special projects from the council. This one would, would have come from what, uh, envelope? Given that we didn't recommend an amount, if you wanted to grant, uh, a grant, it would be a special project in the council in 2026. Okay. And what's, what do you, what was the amount? 7,500. It was requested. How much is in the budget envelope? It's around 300,000 if not mistaken, Madam Finance Director?
I think it was 300,000 this year. I think we put the same amount as last year. So if I'm understanding your explanation, Eve, it was refused because there's a lack of information. Yes, that's exactly it. It's a lack of information. And there's lots of, they already have a lot of requests in the system. So it'd be less money to, to provide. So if the recommendation were to be accepted, if the, if the vote, can we contact that group and say, it's not categorically no. But come back to us with information and we'll look at it again? Absolutely. The group can always come back before council and ask council to reconsider if there is additional information. And I would even recommend that to the group. It's a letter. Well, do you already have guarantees in the letters they share in that? It will lead to lots of support from lots of people, but I understand. Thank you very much. That was one of the things that I took note of. I think they put the details that they were able to put, bring, put together, I would imagine, but I don't know what, 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 the, the place they want to rent, the number of square feet. What's the cost of that lease? I understand they're asking, only asking us for 7,500, but it is money of our citizens. Uh, more details would help to fill in, in the picture, at least to properly assess things. Councillor Omeri O'Brien, any questions? Thank you, your worship. Can we table that request until we receive, uh, information to, the information looking for? We table it? Well, the motion is to refuse the request as, as presented. They can, the group can come before us with a modified demand or, or requests with more information. Nothing stops them from doing that. A refusal does not stop the council for, it does not stop, that does not prevent it from coming back for a council. Can we table that request until we receive information to, the information looking for? We table it? Well, the motion is to refuse the request as presented. They can, the group can come before us with a modified demand or request with more information. Nothing stops them from doing that. A refusal does not stop the council. For, it does not stop, that does not prevent it from coming back before council. They can bring it back in January or later. Right now, I'll say with the information that we have, we can't recommend. For the amount requested.
Because they can, they can come back, like if they wish, if they wish to continue their project. They're even mentioning, like in their letter, they would be ready to come back to the council. To ask questions. Thank you. So. All in favor, saying five, saying aye? Against nay? One nay? Carry. Thank you. Number three. The third one is the Pointe du Chene Community Recreation Center. As I explained previously. The Recreation Center for Pointe du Chene met with the administration a few weeks ago. And they would like to change like the information panel in front of the building. To have like an L E D digital sign. So the total cost of the project, forty-five thousand dollars, like to make the change of this sign. So there's already like a twenty-five thousand dollar amount accumulated from the previous year. So they would like to use with this project. So we support this initiative. But they would need, they would need at least nineteen thousand, like a close to twenty thousand to complete like the project. In the former Pointe du Chene L S D for their recreation center. Councilor McElroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the following. Be it resolved that municipal council approve the administration's recommendation and provide a grant of nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents from the council's special projects budget. One dash two eight two five three to the Pointe du Chene Community Recreation Center as requested.
So moved by Councilor McElroy, seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Actually was twenty-five cents, not twenty-one, but.
Oh, sorry.
They're small numbers, I know that. Question, Conseilier Pierre-Bru.
Question. If I understand well, like it's a unilegual, anglophone sign, like you know, would be like a digital sign. So it would be, you can switch, like similar to the one we have, like at the extremity of the town. So you can put whatever they want. So we'll ask them like to put like maybe some advertisement from the town or on a regular basis. On this note.
Just if I could comment. The C E O made reference to perhaps the sign to be used for advertising for events or.
Municipal events.
Subjects that are outside of Pointe du Chene. And I just want to say that the, as has been mentioned already, the, the center is paid for fully by taxpayers of just Board Two, Pointe du Chene. But it's open entirely to all of Chediac. All the children's programs, any, any program that's there. You don't have to show I D with a Pointe du Chene address. You can come from Skuduk, Chediac Cape, or anywhere in Chediac. As a matter of fact, I'm sure people come from outside of even Chediac area. To participate, especially in the summer with some of the children's programs that they put, they put on there. And most recently, as I understand it, there's a Westmoreland-Albert or Albert-Westmoreland Early Intervention Childhood. I'm not getting this correct, I know, but a program along those lines that's been added to, to the list of numerous activities that take place there. Thank you.
Thank you.
On this note, all in favor, saying five, saying aye? Against nay? Motion carried. Thank you. The last one, but not the least. So the last one. It's, it's a grant request from the volleyball team from L G R School. As you're probably aware, like we give like some grants, annual grants, like to the women's and men's hockey teams. From the high school to help them, like in various initiatives and participation. So the specific request comes from the, the school volleyball, volleyball club. And they would like to get like a grant from a thousand dollars that would come like from the special project fund. No, that's the sponsorship fund. And there's still some amount like left for this year. To give this grant. Mrs. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Be it resolved that municipal council approve the administration's recommendation and provide a grant of a thousand dollars. From the community activity sponsor budget one dash two seven one seventy-one to the L G R School volleyball club as requested. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By Councilor, Deputy Mayor Sid Bicollet-Bour, seconded by Councilor Joel Desprez. I reverse your name. All in favor, saying five, saying aye? Against nay? Motion, motion carried. Thank you. Number thirteen, like requests from inquiries by members of council. I would like to mention the happy event. Many of you were here, like it was the official opening of the. Of the new Providence House. The new nursing care home, like essentially we will move from the, the old building to the new building. So today was the official opening with the Minister D'Inchantin Boudreaux and our M L A, Jean-Claude Bla. He was a former employee of the Villa Providence and now is our M L A. So this morning, he talked about this professional journey and how it was dear to his heart to contribute for this. To the success of this new like infrastructure that will benefit many people. Simply to give you the good news. And I also asked like individuals. To submit your questions. And thank you for those who did. Councilor Boudreaux, yes, I just want to mention like when it was a motion like for, for the grants. In the document, like we have the memorandum, like for the grants we give. It puts like the contribution we addressed, but contribution be like for the, like the hockey club, like for. Does it come to the councils automatically? Is during like the budget process? So it's part of the budget process? And was it already accepted? So when we adopted the budget, did we question like the other neighboring community can also contribute to this? Ah, okay. And specifically like for the hockey, I think that's what you're asking, your question? Because there was a question for an additional request that came and it was not, we did not retain it because. Capacadi like did not also like consider this additional request because they, they had to purchase ice elsewhere. Just a couple of items, just to inform the council member, like last Thursday, we had an information evening on the Health Network. And Julie was there. Very, very, I was impressed, like the regional commission, like was an update, like the shoreline trail and. And they see Chediac, like they could develop, like they said, Chediac could be a trail, a trail sound. It really good. Julie, I congratulate like for hosting this event and I'm really looking forward like for an update, what happened like from the Alma Trade to Capacadi. It was a great evening. Congratulate you. And I'm looking forward to see the consultant report for the Regional Service Commission. So it's, it's great. Also a question for our staff. So at noon, we had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and there was one spot that they had, asking like for a report from the town, so myself and Danny Pellerin. So we, we report like to the members of the Chamber of Commerce what's going on. So this is actually the external document you prepare, like for the strategic plan, the five-year plan. And also the Danish report is focusing a lot on this. So one member of committees like Membramcoque, Capelid, they have a, like a newsletter. Is it, is it something that could be done like in town to, to give more information to the citizen, what we do in town, what we do in this situation? Carriquet has one? I know like we had the Gai du Bon temps, it was, it was too big, not too big, not the right color, like too many. Too many pictures of the mayor that were sold too often. Maybe, and it was, and the garbage been like at Canada Post, like at the post office. So I wanted to mention, might be interesting to them. I'm not sure, like your department, you have some kind of concept? So we will subcontract to Councilor Boudreaux to help us with this. So the budget item is still there, as you noticed, in this year's budget was still there. So what's happening like with the last year, like it was allowed like an evaluation to find a way. Because to, to print it, we found a lot of copies of the Gai du Bon temps in the garbage can. If we have a thousand copy and there's seven hundred and fifty in the garbage, it's, it's waste. To bring something new that be more like digital with a certain number of paper copies, still part, copies is still part of the plan. So thank you very much. And I have any time also, Mr. C E O had a comment, also a follow-up comment, just to add, like we are working with the other communication plan. That, that is also part of the strategic planning. So it will orient us like to see like, as the Director of Communication mentioned. I can tell you like we're already anticipating some. Educational pieces for, for the population like over the next year. I will just give you an example, like the city of Moncton, often they publish a summary of where do my taxes go? So with that, you have something similar, a tool similar to this one to educate the population, like the, the former L S Ts was part of the town and. Their contribution, like where are their money going? We want, always want to improve the communication of the citizen, but of course, like we do not disagree with you, but we're analyzing those issues. And we also have like the senior friendly committee, but some, some might be older than me around the table. I would not give any. We're not, if we'd nice, be nice, it's not everybody was comfortable with technology. So it's nice to print something printed. Thank you very much, Councilor Boudreaux. The notice of motion, like for the Pascal Poiret House. So I will talk to see the details. So I'm notifying, it's a notice of motion to collaborate like the, the town and not the club, but the group, the hub. That's all and thanks for your patience. Councilor Pierre-Bru. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk about the medical clinic in Chediac. I know like it's not under like the. The, the direction of the town or the council. But it's still a service that is offered in our municipality. And I know there was a survey done by the Health Council. For the services and barriers, the population experience to have access to healthcare services. I don't know if you're trying to, to get some service at the medical clinic. Unless you have like four phones and you're ready to wait a long time. And to call, make multiple calls to get the line. It's really horrible. And many people mentioned it to me last week, like this person says, was put, put on hold for four hours and was there with his phone. Said, I'm still on hold. Will you take it? But you cannot take the call because there's no place there, no appointments available. I think it's not, it's certainly not a good service we are providing to our citizens. And I know Mrs. Holt was talking to have thirty new clinics, the province, I'm hoping they will not take. The one for Chediac as an example, because it would be a catastrophe. I cannot see twenty-twenty-five with all like the telephone system that exists. That we cannot have a better system like in our clinic. It's ridiculous, really. And I would like. That we send a letter to, by the town to the Health Network and to our provincial M L A. Asking to review like, to revisit the system in order to improve the system for the people of in our region. Because it's been going on for a long time. It doesn't, nothing seems to change. And with the, Mrs. Holt promises like to improve like the, the clinics. I think it's time for the town like to put their, their pants on and make a statement like for our. For, for the citizens of our town. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm giving you notice. I'm ready like to give you a notice of motion for the next meeting to present a motion to this effect. So that we notify like the Health Network and our provincial M L A. In order to try to improve this service. I heard like the same comments from people and some others. Myself also, like I do not use their services very often. The few times I, I use those services. I had a good service, but maybe I was just lucky, was luck. But some others, like I heard it went otherwise. Sometime my service at time, it was, it was, I had to wait longer. But I imagine that the volume of calls like it might vary one day to another, but I understand they have a high volume of call. But they should have a system where people could be put in a queue or be notified like. They will not take calls between this time and that time. The thing I always notice, like the building. Is providing the same service for the last twenty-five, thirty years or more. And the Chediac population over the last three years exploded compared to what it was. So we need to have more service. We have more people. But certainly I appreciate like the notice of motion. Certainly something we can do. Thank you very much. Councilor O'Brien. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to bring two items. The first point would be. I'd like to get an update on the work being done at the Webster Park. I saw some work was being done. And I was contacted like to ask exactly what was going on there to get more detail. Yeah, they wanted to have details. Mrs. Bélanger. Maybe just give us an overview like. So this summer. We proceeded to work to ensure like the security of the land. So we added like some material like to, we removed like the, to, to fill the holes and the potholes and also to put it more uniform. To make like the, the land feel more secure. And also we have a design plan for the park that was done. And following this, while we are relying on this plan to, to take other actions. So there would be a trail that we're hoping to build that would go around the park. So the material seems to be brought to the parking lot. We'll wait. If it's not possible this year, we will do it next year in the spring. But the, the material will still be in the parking lot. And this trail is, is built from our Public Works team. It's a, it's a team that just love to, to, to do this work, this type of work. So we really appreciate it. In the design plan, there were also some, some design like flower beds, like landscape, like shrubs and. We will be adding like some landscaping to, so it's more like agreeable and more ni, nicer and more healthy. And also we will have like a gasebo. And this gasebo like is being designed. And the sign also, the sign for, for, for the Webster Park, the same as Rotary Park is being designed on our service provider. I'm talking of conception, I'm calling like the design conception, not the material. So we do not. We did not agree on the type of image we wanted. We have an idea in mind, the same as the John Lion Park, like we would like to, to have something. Similarity in our parks, not downtown, but in Chediac, in the municipality. And also. Some more furniture, we'd like to, and it was in the budget for twenty-twenty-six. Thank you for your specification. Very good. Thank you. So my second item, I would, point I would like to make is comments concerning the project of the new recreation center. Many times that the residents have mentioned, like the, like the town should consider the possibility to establish a partnership with the Y M C A. The Y M C A is already recognized for their expertise in the management of community and sports recreation and their reputation and operation experience. And their capacity to ensure planning the new operation and the programming. the operation and the programming of a recreation center. In my opinion, Mr. Mayor, it's only my opinion, in my opinion, between the town and the YMCA would allow us to put our resources in common and offer like more services that would be beneficial to their community and neighboring communities. In order to ensure like a complete transparency in my intention, I would like for the council member to look into inviting representative from the YMCA to present their business model. And this will allow us to get like a complete understanding of their practice and the service and their services and also the opportunity for a partnership. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Brian, certainly would be an option that could be interesting. That's why I brought it here this evening. And I think something, Mr. CEO, that was looked at as a possibility, at least to look at the management model. It's always something like the council could consider. I'm using, right now, like we are managing, it's our staff and we have companies like in different towns and cities, like they hire professionals, companies or groups.
So we're looking, we're ready to look at anything.
Willing to invite, well, look, we'll study the situation, I'll be honest with you. It's the first time I've heard about the center and the potential connection to Chediaque. But if there are people from the YMCA who want to be involved in the Chediaque project, they can communicate their intention. We will definitely look at, in that analysis, see what management model will propose to council if we do go forward with the center. It's not too late. There's still the time for it, we're still at the start of the project. Great, thank you, councillor.
Councillor Ronald Cormier, thank you, your worship. First of all, I'd like to support the comments of councillor Bro. In terms of the medical center, to have the opportunity to have an appointment. I'd just like to remind people, for those who were there, I think most, I think maybe all the council, two or three years ago. We had a meeting with Vitalité and with the Capacadi, the neighboring municipality. We'd asked questions and stats, things that we were waiting on, that we wanted to confirm and see. And we were told that we would be sent statistics back to us if they were sent, I never saw them. It would be good, it would be good to have an approach where you go directly to Vitality. They had made that offer two and a half years ago. Maybe we have some channels there and I will certainly support the motion that councillor Bro would like to bring before council. I think that there could be, well, some possibilities in terms of improving a service. Not that the people who are there aren't working hard, they're probably working really hard. But there's not enough, not enough people, they're not able to provide, that's the problem. We have a population with a lot, the population was a lot smaller twenty years ago, but it's not the same right now. We have to make sure that as municipality, we have to encourage Vitality Vitalité and the Health Department to move forward. Secondly, it's a question of continuity, your worship. Where are we in terms of the taxi situation in town of Chediaque? Once again, today, you saw a post on Facebook. I was blasting everyone, saying there's no taxis after eight P M. And I'm just maybe Mr. Clerk has something to share and maybe a timeline, if he has one. I will try, I will try again. I think we're at the same spot, I won't lie, we communicate with the three. We got two answers out of three. One of the companies told us that they were already offering that service. And so we have to check, what we'd like is a little more detail. On our side, the renewal is in January, so to think of that, the licenses are granted at the start of the year. Might be some opening that we could do on our side to try to get some more details, that's a good point. And secondly, we are still always open to opening up the service to other companies as well. It's, I know it doesn't answer your question immediately, but it does give you a bit more detail, but I think that the renewal is in January, it's a good moment perhaps to ask some questions. Your worship, maybe we have some flexibility to encourage a better service. There's nothing stopping other businesses from offering their services, taxi services in the community. They can do it three sixty-five days a year if they'd like. Yes, I agree, your worship, but I'm not saying that we're not showing it, but if we could show that we're encouraging, well, I'm not saying there's a lack of leadership, but encourage the owners to have a deal. The weekend or I know you can't force them, but if we wanted to have those three people, those three organizations, the three owners, we can pass on that information to encourage them to do more. It's not something, we don't have the authority to force them to provide coverage from one, over certain hours. But we could, nonetheless, your worship, it well depends on what the council wants to do. Look at a bylaw that would, if, if we can do it legally, we could look at having another bylaw. The research that I received to that effect in terms of that type of bylaw in all of the municipalities that I could see, there are no bylaws that speak to opening hours and service hours. Perhaps, your worship, that we could be a trailblazer. See, there must be a reason why it's not there, with your worship. I'm not a lawyer. I don't think there are any around the table, so maybe we could ask some opinions from those who are supposed to be better knowledgeable on these files than us in terms of what's legal and not. And your worship, maybe you're right, but I might be right as well. We don't know who's right. Mr. Clerk, on that front, I don't think it's the question of legality, it's a question of market per se. Everywhere else, if there's an opportunity to operate and to get business, pardon the English, they'll do it. So I think here, we're starting to get more and more demand, it's not the municipality we were five or six or seven years ago. So I think they would have to adapt. So collaboration between council staff derives some solutions, it would be a great idea. So. Did I shut you off? I thought you were blinking earlier. I was blinking, I shut myself off. Just what I'd like to advise, that I'll send you the Lifestyle Committee, Julie provided a pretty detailed report, I won't take fifteen minutes to do it, I'll send it to you by email. So, number fourteen, no reading of municipal bylaws, but we have a few motions. So first of all, do you want to say something on that? Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Patricia. I completely forgot. There was a committee report from me that I will prepare and send it by email. I forgot about it, you can do it verbally in January as well. Yes, but it would have been better before the end of the year, I apologize. So, Regional Emergency Response Plan. Tina. So, that was the presentation that you got from Conorad. I'd like to bring out a few differences to plan before with Chediaque and the new plan. Let's see that the plan is quite similar. We sent you a copy as well with all the changes. All the changes in red, but the biggest differences, the new plan that's being proposed is a bit longer. But the reason is that lots of things were already in the appendix in the former plan. So now it's part of the new regional plan. And there are some small things that removed all references to local service districts related to the law. Instead of, refers to the law instead of wrangling it all out. So that's, those are the major differences in terms of what's proposed and what was there before. Okay. So a bit of reorganizations and some stipulations, basically. Great. So. I would simply need someone to read it, councillor Joaquin Depret. Whereas a regional
Our emergency plan was developed in regional emergency plan had been developed in collaboration with the municipality, the southeast and the Kent region to ensure mutual assistance and close cooperation, but resolved that the municipal council of the town of Chediaque adopt a regional emergency measures plan as presented. Bubba councillor Joaquin Depret, seconded by Jean-Claude Bertrand. Questions on the motion, councillor Paul Boudreaux? So is that document bilingual? Yes, yes, we would be able to share like the bilingual version on the website. Monsieur Bouchevarie, I had the same question. It's not, it's not often you're in the same opinion like councillor Boudreaux. Collegiality. All in favor saying aye, against nay, it's carried. Thank you very much. Fifteen point two, council meeting schedule. So who's bringing to this, Mr. Clerk? So we're coming back to you with the municipal council presented on November seventeen. So when we revisited like the bylaw, there is some disposition in the municipal bylaw that says we need like a unanimous vote to make a change. However, in the case for the meeting schedule, we only need like the third like the two-third of the members present once the vote is held. If we look, I was just trying to see if I had my revision for paragraph, it's really explained. So when we have to modify like the schedule of a meeting, the time of the meeting, there's a possibility like we can have a two-third, like to be adopted by two-thirds, the members of the council. So we're just presenting that the same resolution that was presented on November seventeen in order to have a smooth meetings for twenty twenty-six. So thank you very much. Councillor Janis Komny, if you would like to read it, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meeting schedules, whereas the town municipal, the town municipal council procedural bylaw number twenty-three zero-three is used to govern the conduct of council meeting, whereas the provisions of the town of Chediaque municipal council procedural bylaw number twenty-three dash zero-three may be amended with the approval of at least two-thirds of the council members present, but resolved that the plenary meetings of January fifth, February second, March second, April seventh and May fourth twenty-six be canceled. Yet further resolved that the schedule be amended to add regular meetings on January nineteen, January nineteen, she said January seventeenth, but it's January nineteen, said more chocolate. February second and seventeen, March second and sixteen, April seven and twentieth and May four twenty-six and that is meetings starts at six P M rather than seven P M. Move as councillor Janis Komny seconded back. Councillor Jean-Michel Galat. Question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a question for our CEO. I don't want to put you on the spot. Did you look maybe at the scenario too? If it, if it works like our two meetings for a month, instead of having the three meetings that we had before? I can tell you, like, we prepare a review of the procedural bylaw and then we will be able to make the recommendations at this moment. Because essentially us at the administration will provide you with some recommendation and we are doing some work based on the council's wishes. But really, it's up to the council to determine if it's the formula that works for them. I will tell you, it's not abnormal, it's too unusual to the methods we are using in Chediaque, that method is used in many other municipalities. So are there more meetings than elsewhere? Well, yes, but if we compare like to a bigger municipalities, I would say we would have the same number of meetings, but we still have the flexibility to have like special meetings if needed or emergency meetings if we need to do so. I would say like, if it works for the council, I would say you have two similar meetings, might be like overkill, maybe it's one meeting, but maybe more like with more sophisticated and one meeting that would be lighter, like at least that the council can take some decision. Because I heard the comment, a plenary meeting was okay, like we heard information, but when it came to the regular meeting, the citizens did not attend the other meeting and they did not see the debate. Maybe to look at a forum, maybe one like a lighter meeting versus to have two similar meetings. So it would be up to the council to decide that's what they want or something else. But we're working on a drive to present to the council, you answered that my question really well. I would just like to there's a part also, like we will capture what you said. If you think it's worth, these are good points to bring. But if you think like some changes should be brought, I think we would be open like your comments in general. And I could return that question to the council members, so the hours, well, it's something that I appreciate, like to start at six o'clock instead of seven, but for the other decisions, well when our predecessor, like of Mr. Legel, like so what we wanted is to accelerate and have decision taken to each meeting in the sense like we would not lose any time. It's really up to you to see and I think that your comments are good and all the council members. You only think I would like to add, often these comments, like during the plenary meeting, the public is not there, was not in the room, but they would attend the regular meeting and we already had discussed everything. So then essentially, we would decide not to repeat ourselves, but it was at the time we were not all so like broadcasting. It's only since maybe the pandemic, like we are broadcasting on YouTube. So the citizens, regardless of type of meeting, people have a chance to get some information and see the debate. Saying that people don't attend the meeting, yes, we have people who attend our meeting when it's a hot topic, but regardless what it is, but the people, we do not see like you, like when you are debating, but they can see our discussions and they can and replay like, they can replay them as many times as they wish, might think so consider, the clerk. It's whatever works for the council members, thank you. Any other question? Councillor Bouchevarie, thank you, it was not a question. Maybe more comment, but I think like January nineteen is kind of far. It's like a month and a half and I know it's the holidays and not too much things happening like in the town, but if ever we have a special meeting or between those times, could it be on Monday night as we do, like we do not block our meeting? So when we have, instead of having meetings like on Wednesdays or Thursdays, just a comment, like if we decide to have a special meeting, because it's a month and a half. If you allow me during my report, I shared like a couple of sessions I would like to have with the council, so so maybe like the second week of work, working session, like to work on some files or special meeting, depending what would be the choice of the council, but can anticipate or tell you to anticipate like another meeting than the one held on the eighteen, maybe not the first week. But it would be on a Monday, definitely, thank you. Mrs. Deputy Mayor, I have something also that interesting. One time we said we'd rather not having plenary meeting because people were not there and they were not listening, not to repeat. They were not there for our discussions. As it is now, we decided to go up to main, I have no problem with this. I have no problem with this. No, I have no problem with this, but I do not remember what the difference would have been other than vote in a plenary meeting and the regular meeting that now we have the two, two meetings, a meeting is a meeting. We meet and discuss, but I don't this question or a comment to, to tell. We meet because it's, it's our job, like we meet as, as many times as we can because it's part of our job. And we have like animated debates on the topics that concern us, but I think that, if I may add. Yes, I think as, I think what's important is to meet at six o'clock and, and I have a, then like to come at five and get out of, of ten. It's what was, it was more difficult like when the meeting ended to be at ten, ten thirty. We're paid like to represent either two or three per meeting. But I agree like what Sylvain said. The fact that we have two meetings, we can vote. Things are moving. A plenary meeting, well, it was more like an information, but things would drag. And then we had a big meeting at the end of the month to go through all like the material. Comments, questions, I appreciate like the information you gave us and the fact, the fact it broadcasted. And if I may add, Mr. Mayor, if you're like, to the resolution is to make modification like until elections, I can tell you like the, the, the proposed bylaw will propose like it's only enacted with the new council. So right now with the new procedural bylaw and the new council, this decision would already have been determined and implemented with the new council. And of course, I did. The question is, there's not a question, there's a lot of question of the new pilot that will be presented over the new year, but it will give you an idea. Thank you on this note. All in favor of those modifications, saying aye, against nay? Carried, thank you. Transfer general capital reserve fund. He was gonna say like regional. Our finance director will be sharing. So before we start, you will see the amount, you say wow. I can tell you that we had major concern where we're going with some expenses and by the end of the summer with some projects and not, I'm not saying mistake, but maybe things we are forgetting in the operational bit. And I would say like the administration and all the directors like they, they reflected twice, like do we have finished this year or maybe not or? And it, and it went on internally. So essentially like at the end of the day, we are forecasting a surplus and I will let the finance director like to, to talk about the surpluses, but of course it's always predictable like to transfer this amount to the reserve fund before the end of the year because it comes like a capital we can use right now. And it's not a surplus like a two year surplus like we use or a scenario like that, that's something we use two years after. So I will let the finance director talk, Mrs. Yes, as our CEO would just said. Like the budget, twenty twenty five budget, like the amount to transfer like to the reserve was nine hundred and ninety one thousand. So we started with this idea in mind to this evening. So we're asking if it's possible to transfer one point two millions to the capital reserve fund and to have two hundred and sixty thousand that would go the operational reserve, general operation versus immobilization. So this amount like the two hundred and sixty thousand, it's the five percent of the budget, budgeted expense for the previous year. So we made sure we did not spend this amount to maximize it. And what's left of our total surplus, one point five million would go like to the capital reserve fund. So the difference between the one point five and the nine hundred and ninety one thousand that was forecasted is like Mr. Legel said. We kind of got scared because we thought we were spending too much money and people like like they roll up their sleeve and they were careful and we managed our money really well and we ended up with a little bit more. Just to give you, I will go into categories quickly. Financial services, like our interest rents on the credit line to the new debentures that came in this year. We had higher expenses like eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. But in our projects, like the capital paid from the operating fund and the special council special projects, we, the eight hundred and fifty thousand that wasn't spent. So these two kind of balance each other, but in general the engineer fee, we paid more than what that was forecasted this year. So it was something with a recreation. So expected expensive for the recreation center is two hundred thousand, we were at a hundred and fifteen thousand. The expense for Rotary Park was delayed next year because we have a new project. I have many details if anyone has questions, but in principle, that's where we're at. For the general fund, one million, two hundred and sixty five thousand to the general capital reserve fund and two hundred and six thousand to the operating reserve fund. Thanks for this clarification. So it's nice to see like after concern like it went on the right side of the coin. Councillor Patricio Bouchevarie would like to read it? Be it resolved that one million, two hundred and sixty five thousand be transferred to the capital reserve fund, including two hundred thousand for economic development. These funds will come from the general operating fund. It also resolved that, that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars be transferred to the operating reserve fund. These funds will come from the general operating fund. I'm, I shall move, move by councillor Patricio Bouchevarie, seconded. Councillor Emil O'Brien, yes, I have a question. We will still end with a surplus, so do we, a ballpark figure or? It gives like a buffer about a hundred thousand dollars. I was just wondering. But with the amounts were transferred, what, what's being forecasted like? But we have the invoices that will come in. We can have some surprises, but a hundred thousand dollars may be more positive than we anticipate like we should end up with. Thank you. Councillor Peter Burrow, question. If I understand properly, there's a cap, a maximum we can transfer in the operating fund, in the water operating fund, what is the maximum? Five percent of the budgeted expenses from the previous year. Five percent of the twenty twenty four budget. There's no carryover in this one, right? Each year it changes, next year the amount you can put will be up to a maximum of five percent of the twenty twenty five budget. Essentially, if I understand, it's not a carryover. There's a maximum we can have like in a bank account back at any time. And for the operating reserve, as the auditor said, when they presented, we, we contributed too, too much money. And with a resolution we made to, I think it was for the for the, the project on like the war at Point du Chain, so it can, it reduced this amount and now it become compliant. But before the end of the year, we can, we can put in, in amount to balance like what would be eligible for us to put to next, the ideal is to maximize like the five percent, thank you, absolute. And the balance, there's no maximum like for the capitals. So you put all the rest in the other. Councillor Paul Boudreau. If possible, maybe not this evening, you mentioned like the list, the projects that were not completed. Could you maybe send this list to us? And the other time we, we talked about meetings, interesting, but we said, so we had monthly report for expenses. It's been a long time, we, we should have some in twenty twenty six, it might also. Yeah, financial report and also we can briefly explain like. So what does it, it said like in terms of percentage, what we spend in this year because of the changes of the department, it was difficult to do so, but, but it's something I already mandated like the finance director, we'll bring it back in twenty twenty. It's all there, the only thing, something we would do quarterly, like every three months instead of one month. Why, why every three months? It was already accepted to do it this way. That's what we were aiming like a quarterly report. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cleric. I just wanted to add, the item is still on the agenda. Is there like with the changes? And so we wanted to leave them, it's a superstar, we know like you saw it doing budget, but our finance director likes to still need to, 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 to address like to our, to our work. And she's been here for a big four months. On this all favor saying aye, against nay? Carried.
Fifteen point four, water service transfer for capital. Fund, same type of explanation, yes, your worship, the transfer that we're foreseeing for the reserve is only thirty five dollars, but this year we go forward with a request to transfer three hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. How is this explained? We had budgeted nine hundred and twenty five thousand to move forward the trunk sewer project. Given the, that we acquired some land and we did not succeed getting that in time, that amount of, in time, that amount of money was not spent. It's given that the difference in that, we do not have credits, creditor accounts to seek the water payments for the amount, interest payments that were forgiven. This is related to our expenses. In principle, it's basically that, the rest of the expenses in the water account, there weren't many things unexpected. It's as budget, inspection of the reservoir as well. And everything was relatively well with the water fund this year. So that's the, that explains that request right there. Councillor Joao Depre would like to read it, thank you, your worship. Fifteen point four. Fifteen point four, transfer service or utility capital reserve fund water. Be it resolved that eight hundred thousand dollars be transferred to the capital fund, utility reserve fund. These funds will come from the utility operating fund, I so move and I have a question after. Moved by councillor Joao Depre, seconded by councillor Jean-Michel Galant. A question to councillor Depre. Why is it that the water fund is related to trunk shoreline? Because it has to be in budget for utility. What's the French word for that, well, utility? I understand that eight hundred thousand dollars would have been paid by the water bills? Yes, the users, the water users would have paid for that bill, yes. So I always think of this, I like to think outside of the box, let's say tomorrow morning, a tower blows up, blows up and falls, where we get the money to, to bring it back up? In the capital fund, we could possibly seek a capital borrowing. But I want to reassure you that we inspect regularly. We regularly inspect our water tower. But where it can become an issue is as staff, let's say, we don't do regular improvements of the infrastructure, underground infrastructure. We wouldn't want another Calgary. So when you present a project in the five year plan to renew a water line from one place to another or sewer, the sewer, it's because the asset management plan, the quality infrastructure says that we have to do that improvement, that renovation, that renewal, or it could become a problem. If, when the council says no, 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 and then we have a surplus and then there's a catastrophic break somewhere, we're not there as a municipality. That's not what's going on here. We regularly invest in our infrastructure. Are there water main breaks that can happen? Sure. And sometimes it's a small patch that you can put in or a little improvement. And the system might be out for twenty four, forty eight hours with maybe a boil, boil order for a few houses. But long term, we are making the proper investments and the proper recommendations. I just want to reassure people, we don't, we're not in that type of situation. So great, so while all those in favor then shall say aye, contrary minded nay? Motion carried, thank you. Number fifteen point five, capital, municipal capital borrowing board. Madame Finance Director, thank you very much. So this is a, a request to borrow some money. It's access to a credit margin for some projects that we determine would be capital projects for twenty twenty six. So we already gone through that list. The project in question here is the Main Street reconstruction from King to South Cove. And also the replacement of three public works vehicles. The amounts that you see are supported by the estimates that we received for the project. It's an estimate they received from Englobe, so fifty percent. And I'd like to add the interest costs that we are foreseeing for the credit margin. We're also aware that that project is one of the ones for, we're asking renewal, capital renewal funds. So in twenty twenty six, we're asking for five hundred and sixty one thousand. I discussed with the province and my contact recommended that we not consider that amount as one hundred percent accepted yet. So to go with the full amount of the project in that application, to make sure that if ever something were to happen, we would have the full amount approved. And we would need to restart the process. That project is also will go with the PMHP on the Main Street and Provincial Street. It's a provincial street, so the province is paying something, the capital renewal fund, it's South Cove that will be covered. And South Cove Street. And also with the sewer, the sewer commission will have a role to play, one point five million. So the amount of twelve million, it might, if it scares people, I can assure you that it's not at all what will end up borrowing. But that's what we want to ask for is a total amount so that we can get the money on hand to be able to pay the bills and be reimbursed by those three entities. So in terms of the vehicles, two trucks and the hybrid SUV that we want to replace with a truck. Staff will get the SUV and the truck will go to the garage with Public Works. And the two trucks were due to be replaced in, it's a twenty fifteen and twenty fourteen. If I might add, this was all presented in the capital projects that we, where we presented what we're recommending today, tonight. So on that, would someone like to read it? Read the motion. Councillor Joao Depre, fifteen point five, municipal capital borrowing board. Be it resolved that municipal Chediak under the capital, municipal capital borrowing act, submit to the municipal capital borrowing board an application for authorization to borrow for a capital expense for the following term and amount. The Main Street reconstruction, reconstruction, King to South Cove, fifteen years for twelve million, forty two thousand. Replacement of three public works vehicles, five years, two hundred and fifty seven thousand. Be it further resolved that the treasurer be authorized in the name and on behalf of the town of Chediak to negotiate interim financing for the general capital fund according to the authorizations issued by the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation. I so move, your worship, moved by councillor Joao Depre, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sylvie Collet Boudreau. Any questions? Otherwise, all those in favor shall say aye, contrary minded nay? Motion carried, thank you very much. Fifteen point six, capital renewal plan twenty twenty six to twenty twenty nine. It's again, Madam Finance Director, thank you. So the capital renewal plan, this is financing that we will receive from the province to ensure that infrastructure in this municipality as it exists continues to be maintained and well maintained. So for the town of Chediak in twenty twenty six, we would expect to receive five hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and thirty seven dollars and twelve cents. Now, as I was saying earlier, it's our intention to apply that amount to the South Cove part of the reconstruction. So that will be to redo the, the pipes in that, on that street and the sidewalks. We have received estimated amounts for the next three years, this plan, we need a resolution from council and it's to determine twenty twenty six to twenty twenty nine with the projects that we intend to do. and it's to determine eh, 2026 to 2029, with the projects that we intend to do. After 2026, should we change our minds, there be another project? It's the, if the five-year plan situation changes, those projects can be modified, we can come back and ask the province to change. It's a first submission with more instructions to come from the part of the province as well. But the estimates that we received in 2027, we should receive about 710,000, in 2028, 870,000. In 2029, it would be 1,020,000. So the amount increases each year. This is supposed to be, continue for the years to come. So the projects that we're proposing to connect to that for now, in 2027, would be reconstruction of Como Street 2028. Two piece of equipment, eh, street sweeper and a new rescue unit. Pardon the English words, I didn't write them in French. In 2029, it's Hamilton Street, reconstructing, rebuilding Hamilton Street. So you made councillor Gallant happy. Inaudible. Inaudible. It's the first time you're on the list. That's great. So eh, thank you for the explanations and this is our funds eh, coming out of the fiscal reform for the municipalities. Before, we always had eh, basic amount and an equalization amount, this is being changed, there's an equalization amount. And the eh, capital renewal fund in 2025, the province gave us eh, 71,000 dollars. In 2026, it's 73, plus another 500. It's starting to be far, eh, a lot better and it allows us to make some eh, investments and that's all the better. Councillor German, you'd like to read it? Yes, thank you, your worship. Fifteen point six, capital renewal plan 2026, 2029. Be it resolved that the document titled Town of Shadia 2026 to 2029 capital renewal plan eh, for the capital renewal funding, CRF allocation be adopted. I so move. Moved by councillor Jean-Michel Gallant and seconded by councillor Emil O'Brien. Any questions on the motion, councillor René Cromier? Thank you, your worship. On page eh, there are three out of 20 on the top. Oh, I didn't see that. Which document are you referring to? The one that's just been explained. The one with the color? Fifteen point six, yes. There's three documents in fifteen point six, well. Renewal, the capital renewal plan. If you go to I hit a button and I lost everything. Eh, I found it. If you look at the document, three out of 20. And you see eh, other types, other sources of financing at the type of, at the start, that start of the page. Talks about 320, name of the eh, federal financing, the community financing, 30,000. And if you go again to page seven, it says the same thing. It's the province that gave this as an example, we're in the white section. So, so it's not money that anybody has given us, it's not something, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was money that I wanted to know the programs, that existing programs to make sure that we to understand the number. Yes, indeed. Okay, no questions, thank you. Great. Councillor Paul Boudreau, question. You made the calculations of all the provincial contributions? And federal? The gas tax, is that, that still exists? Gas tax, we receive it, we decided last year to put it all on the new fire hall. There's only one gas tax. If I might add, if it's a new program that the province has created is part of the fiscal reform. Well, let's say the program will look an awful lot eh, in terms of the reports are made, the way of presenting a plan. It'll look an awful lot like eh, the CCBF, Canadian Communities Building Fund. It will be, look very similar to that. Cause it's the department of the local governments that's managing it, it's the same person managing it. I say we, it's all the eh, staff, we were consulted. We, that to have a process that is simplified eh, so that it can be presented, despite all that, you see, this is a new thing that was in the FDCC or the CCBF or eh, last year. They're asking to geo-locate the projects in such a, in such a, such a place. I think the objective with the CCBF eh, is to create a map that fed, the federal government, when we adopt the plans, you can see to show the residents what project will be in my municipality and geo-locate it to such a, such a place. The fund is asking the same thing, it's hard for us to foresee it. I hope that councillor Gallant will not be disappointed, but the objective is to make Hamilton in 2029. But eh, let's say there was a break or some major situation where we would have to devote energies elsewhere. We would need to approve or amend the plan to change the project and to geo-locate it. We'll cross our fingers that that won't happen in the, in 2029. We will eh, don't discourage her like that. I, pardon me, I just wanted to use it as an example. But the plan will be very similar to the gas tax in terms of its form. So eh, we're gonna, eh, we're gonna create a movement like the M6, Hamilton 2029. So, well, all, all those in favor then shall say aye, contrary minded nay. Motion carried, thank you. Fifteen point seven, land acquisition trunk sewer line project. I can speak to that, if there are any more specific questions. The manager of economic and tourism managers here. A few months ago, we presented eh, land acquisition for an easement that we had to do for the trunk line. Finally, we have made, entered an agreement with the owner of that piece of land. So we would need a resolution a motion to finalize acquiring the easement eh, for the PID that was identified. We added a map eh, eh, it was option A or B, this is option B. And it will meet our needs. There's no increase to construction costs. Eh, it, it was just eh, whether you went to the left or right, and this is the lot to the left. So we need a resolution to eh, conclude that eh, agreement in terms of an easement. Councillor Jeanne is coming, would you like to read it? Eh, land acquisition, the trunk sewer line project, whereas the town of Shadia seeks to ensure the timely and effective completion of the trunk sewer line project and whereas the administration has negotiated an easement transfer agreement with a property owner to facilitate access required for this project. Be it resolved that the municipal council authorize the administration of the town of Shadia to enter into the negotiated agreement, provided that the total cost does not exceed 50,000 dollars for access to the property identified by NID zero, eh, 70356852. Be it further resolved that the mayor and the clerk of the town of Shadia be authorized to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the municipal council with all parties involved in these transfers. I so move, your worship, moved by councillor Jeanne is coming, seconded by councillor Jean-Michel Gallant. Any questions? Councillor René Cromier. Thank you, your worship. The easement that we're seeking is the same owner as the other easement, thank you.
I don't, I don't think we negotiated with the same person for the two. Because there's an exist, eh, existing easement. But it's not this eh, owner, it's a different one. Councillor Paul Boudreau. So for the timeline, do you know when the work will be done, like more specifically? Eh, what impact it will have on eh, bicycle eh, trail? Any detail, because people were like, so we did not have like the eh, tender yet, like eh, so before we went to tender, like we already went to the borrowing board. But the goal really is to, is to have like the tenders soon, I'm not sure, like if I'm not mistaken. And hoping that we'll be able like to award like the tender like in January, February and be one of the first to have access, because usually when you run the first project, you can have some savings. So we are eh, eh, in line like to, to do, to do those directive. Unfortunately, yes. They might have to close some trail, if I'm not mistaken, some work will be done like during the winter in some sections and, and that might eh, lighten the impact eh, on the trails, but eh, but of course, eh, we cannot do it because we're told, we're talking, this project's about 40 weeks eh, project, not 40 months, 40, 40 weeks. 40 weeks in total like to realize this project, so there, there might be some eh, they will have an impact, but we're trying to reduce the impact as much as possible. So you should have like a communication plan that if there was a detour, maybe by the new wall bridge, tell the people they can still do the loop. Would be a modify loop. Absolutely, that's something like eh, that's in the, our communication plan, thank you very much. On this note, all in favor saying five saying aye. Against nay? Carried. The last of the motion, land acquisition for season park. We had presented this eh, the, at the in-camera meeting and we had an amount in the budget that was eh, that was granted like during the budget process for year 2025. Same concept, we want to purchase the land and we would like to to start the legal eh, process to purchase it. Eh, we added, we added a map that specifies which area it would be. There's also a blue line, but eh, I apologize if it's not straight, but this one is it's eh, sharing a, a small section, we're not purchasing for, for the, the big line, but it's about 99 acres would be purchasing. Forty-one point 40 hectares. It's close to 100 acres. That would be, we would be purchasing. Even if the amount is a little bit eh, more than what we had budgeted, but we still have this amount like eh, in the budget with the transfer we did this evening. Thank you, councillor Patricia Boukchavari, if you'd like to, thank you, Mister Mayor. Land acquisition for season park, whereas the town of Shadia is seeking to strengthen the municipality's train network as part of its four-season park project. And whereas the municipal council has set aside funds for the acquisition of land in the municipality's five-year plan. Be it resolved that the municipal council authorize the administration of the town of Shadia to enter into the negotiated agreement, provided that the total, total cost does not exceed 510,000 dollars plus HST to proceed with the acquisition of part of the property identified by NID 70193321. Be it further resolved that the mayor and town clerk of Shadia be authorized to sign all necessary agreements on behalf of the town council with all parties involved in these transfers. I shall move, Mister Mayor. Moved by councillor Patricia Boukchavari, seconded by councillor Jeanne is coming. Questions on the motion? What was the amount, I think, 500,000? Yeah, it's slightly over this amount, I would just wonder if it was five, 400 or 500. Councillor Paul Boudreau. So if we go ahead with the four-season park, would it possible to purchase some land? An association of trail, maybe just to have a master plan that what, what we own now and what we do not have to get into detail where the picnic tables would be, but to, to have a master plan, what the four-season plan would look like? Before we said, if we have this, we'll do that or? We have this, it's really interesting, so I'm wondering if you can, is the former CEO prepare, is it part of this like eh? What the, what the park would look like in six months or six years? We presented like eh, a plan that we, with the group that came, I think it was in the spring. And this vision is still what we're working on, but eh, but to purchase possible eh, potential land, it will, it will have, we've done over several years. It's part of the plan. So we have an amount this year for for other purchasing. And it will be done for many years, but because the goal would be to to connect it to the eh, trail system in the municipality and have a vision with access to water at the end of the day, absolutely, we can present this. Like COVID, you were good with the markers. Phase one, two, three, four, so. Was my proudest moment. At least it gave us eh, the, the idea, we can tell people that's what it should look like, thank you very much. Thank you. On this note, all in favor saying five saying aye, against nay? Carried, thank you very much. We have no appointments to committees this evening. And the next meeting, regular meeting will be on January 19. Mrs. Gallant is moving the address, man, thank you very much.